Good morning, everyone. Today is the twenty-third day of July. The time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Current Lake Commissioner Davidson is absent. I'll have you introduce yourselves, starting over here.
Bob Parni, Operations.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Kathy Corliss, Procurement.
Debbie Phillips, Operations.
Aaron Baldwin, Vanguard Cleaning.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Herb Cantu, Landfill.
Well, good to Mr. Procurement.
Alyssa Allington, Procurement.
Mark Winkler, ACT Enviro.
Jacob Friedel, Elections.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Ryan Adams, ACT Enviro.
Paul Schultz, ACT Enviro.
IT Guy, original.
Duncan Communications.
Okay.
Triple County Clerk, Bob Perkins, Ada County Commissioners.
Beth Maun, Treasure.
Well, thank you. Now that we have that complete, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, we have some unfinished business to take off the table, which will require a motion.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I will second the motion. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The first item is final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four oh four eight, Idaho Landfill Household Hazardous Waste and Mobile Collection Services.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Under unfinished business today, we have three items. The first of which is that the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four zero four eight, the Ada County Landfill Household Hazardous Waste and Mobile Collection Services. And the evaluation team for RFP two four zero four eight has completed the evaluations and was prepared to make an award recommendation today. But we received a protest from ACT Enviro in response to the award recommendation. Therefore, we'd like to retable the award recommendation to the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting for further consideration. In the meantime, we will meet with you to discuss the protest and whether this protest has merit or not.
Okay.
And here's a copy of the act. ACT Enviro.
All right. Well, I'll accept the motion.
Okay, I move to table the final rankings of award recommendation, RFP two four zero four eight, Ada County Landfill Hazardous Waste, Household Hazardous Waste and Mobile Collection Services to the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Dale, second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Our second item under unfinished business is the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four zero five two, the Ada County Custodial Services for Benjamin Touchmark and Elder two thousand twenty-four. And the evaluation team for RFP two four zero five two has completed the evaluations and is prepared to make an award recommendation for this project today as well. But we received a revised protest from Vanguard Cleaning Systems in response to the award recommendation. Therefore, we'd like to retable the award recommendation to the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting for further consideration and have time to have an opportunity to talk with the board about the merits of this protest as well.
Okay, any discussion? I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the final rankings of award recommendation for RFP two four zero five two, Ada County Custodial Services for Benjamin Touchmark and Elder two thousand twenty-four to July twentieth, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, one more.
One more. Our final item under unfinished business is the award of bid two four zero six four, Ada County Chiller and Air Handling Replacement, two thousand twenty-four. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Did you read the letter?
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two four zero six four. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two four zero six four to American Chiller Service as the loans' responsive bidder in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you. I'll accept the motion.
That was American Chiller?
Yes, American Chiller Services.
Services. I move to award bid twenty-four zero six four, Ada County Chiller Chiller and Air Handling Replacement, two thousand twenty-four, to American Chiller Services in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome. Okay, moving on to new business. We have a couple of resolutions which require a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two nine nine six, a resolution to close out grant funds from local assistance tribal consistency fund. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Or anyone here to speak? Okay. I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine nine six and ask for a motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine nine six as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine nine seven, resolution for the sale of decommissioned equipment to computers or kits. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion. I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine nine seven.
I'll move to approve resolution number two nine nine seven as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
This is a, that is very, we just started that project and it's working out very well.
Works very good, yeah. Yeah, give that decommissioned equipment to computers for kids. Okay, the next one is I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine nine eight, resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, these are items that were on our Ada County marketplace that were available to other offices and departments for reallocation. But we had no takers, so now they're ready for auction and to auction, get them out of our warehouse.
All right, sounds like a good idea. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine nine eight and call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine nine eight as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Can we?
Commissioner.
Commissioner again.
There it is.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Under our new business this morning, we have the opening of bid two four zero five eight, Ada County Barber Valley Warm Springs Green Belt Pathway Restoration, two thousand twenty-four. And Alyssa has our bond fighting procurement system all keyed up if you're ready for us to open.
I'm ready.
Ready. So, Mr. Chairman, just a little bit about this project. This is a project due contract with a contractor to provide all materials and labor for the asphalt restoration of the Green Belt Pathway approximately between Riverstone International School and the end of Penitentiary Canal Green Belt Section. Today, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder and a total bid amount, which will include an owner's contingency of ten thousand dollars. Okay? Our spreadsheet's going to be opened up here. We have four bidders that have bid on this project. The first bidder is Capital Paving Incorporated, Company Incorporated, with a total bid amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Bidder number two is Granite Excavation Incorporated with a total bid amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. Stroth General is our bidder number three with a bid amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And bidder number four, Sunny Ridge Construction, with a bid amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Those are our four bidders, and we'll need a little bit of time to review those bids. And so, we'd like to request that this be tabled for award to the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of bid two four zero five eight, Ada County Barber Valley Warm Springs Green Belt Pathway Restoration, two thousand twenty-four, to July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have licenses. Any, we have catering permit and some new licenses. Any questions or discussion on any of the licenses? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, four new licenses as identified on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have our distinguished clerk with us, Mr. Trent Triple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Last week, we hosted a, an open house at our Elections Center for over eighty individuals across the country that were in Boise for an Elections Center Conference and some classes. It was a huge success. We rolled out and showed them the ballot verifier, our cages, ballot on man, our security protocols within the Elections Office. And I think everyone walked away with a great sense that Ada County is doing things really well. And a lot of them have since reached out and asked for how they can do some of those same things in their jurisdictions. It was such a big success, I think they've already booked The Grove again for next year to come back and bring another group of people from other jurisdictions to come see how we're doing things here, which was a great thing. Our, Jacob Friedel is from our Elections Office. He's clerk of the day, so he's getting to follow me around today. Whether or not he likes that at the end, we'll find out. But he was part of that group, and it was a great success. It also was a great cost savings for our office because most of our Elections workers were able to attend those classes rather than travel out of state to go see some of those classes. So, by hosting them here, we got those classes and didn't have the travel expenses. So, a great thing for our office.
They like the election verifier?
They love it. They can't believe that we're doing it. And they're scrambling to try to get it in place for November, for a lot of their jurisdictions.
Right, and cages?
The cages, they love them. They couldn't believe that we had a single cage that handled everything for a precinct. That's something that's unique, so.
Well, congratulations. That's good.
It was a good day.
Thank you.
And again, I appreciate the support from the board for our Elections operations. Next week, budget brief, obviously on Tuesday night for the public budget brief. That's on track. And other than that, I just, again, welcome Jacob for the day. He's been doing outstanding work in the Elections Office, and we wanted to give him a chance to see the greater view of what the clerk's office does other than just Elections.
Did he pay it extra to follow you around?
He may ask for more after he follows me around.
All right.
That's all we have for clerk of office. Thank you.
Well, any questions on the board?
No, just a reminder to everybody that's listening or whatever that this budget presentation is for the public. And we invite the public to come on the thirtieth, next Tuesday.
All right. Well, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Claims Journal, so a pair of bills.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Actions.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have a tax cancellation, which is really not a cancellation, but rather an adjustment. But that's what the law says. Is there any discussion on this particular one? Anyone here to speak to it? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the one casually lost tax cancellation as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have with us our distinguished treasurer. Do you have anybody following you around today?
I do. Yes, come on up, Rob. Our update this morning is our June monthly investment report. Tim often gives this, but he is at training with the Tax Commission today. So, Rob is joining us to go over our investment portfolio for Jim.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Good. So, let's start here on page one. As the Fed is still struggling with, to tame pesky inflation, our interest rates continue to remain high. So, I draw your attention to the weighted average interest rate of our portfolio, which is four point one one percent, as we still continue to keep a little over half of our total investment portfolio in cash and enjoying those high interest rates. Rates are good for us as investors. And also, if you look at our interest for the month, a little over a million dollars has been our trend the last few months. We do have a little over two hundred and fifty-five million dollars in the L G I P fund right now that two hundred and one million of that will be distributed out to the taxing districts this week from our June tax collection. We've collected a little over ninety-nine percent, so we're doing very well in overall collections. And like I said, that'll be distributed out to the taxing districts on Thursday. So, we would expect our July interest to pop up similar to what we saw back in January, and a little over two million. So, we continue to exceed our forecasted interest for the year, again, because of that high interest rate, which has been presented in the past. We expect it to come down quite a bit as interest rates come down and we move money out of the cash market into the longer-term mortgage-backed securities, which are a little bit lower rate, but will be more stable as rates come down. With that in mind, we were looking at the market a little bit. Unemployment rose to four point one percent in June from three point seven in May. Inflation went down to three percent from three point three percent in May, which are the two main drivers that the Fed is looking at on interest rate cuts. Based on that, the market has built in a ninety percent chance that the Fed will cut rates at their September meeting, which will be held the seventeenth and eighteenth. The Fed would be irresponsible to cut rates too quickly. You know, their main tool is their credibility. And if they cut rates too soon and inflation is not tamed and turn around and have to increase rates again, then they will have a hard time taming inflation in the future as the market will no longer trust what they're doing. So, they have to be very careful. So, while that ninety percent chance here for September is fairly high, we have seen that in the past where we thought there was going to be a cut and then inflation numbers come in and they don't do so. So, we'll continue to monitor that closely. We've got a great advisor group with Clearwater and R V K that helps us monitor that. And we will move money from those liquid accounts into the more stable accounts as is warranted to try to maintain that rate of interest and safeguard the public funds.
Aren't they anticipating, or the market's anticipating about the twenty-five basis points reduction in their September meeting?
Yeah, that's.
Which is pretty marginal.
Mm-hmm, exactly. So, like I said, the market expects three cuts, so it'd be seventy-five basis points this year if that happens. So, typically, they're pretty conservative. We'll do twenty-five basis points at a time.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Just no changes in the inflation calculators, are there?
No.
Sometimes they make some adjustments there that changes the inflation.
Yep, no, everything's still pretty stable. We'll see how that goes here as we get closer to September and closer to November with the Elections.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it from our office.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on, we have Coroner's Office. And the coroner notified us that he was not able to make it today, but he has submitted a report. Is there any discussion or anything on the report that the coroner had submitted? Okay, I think it should be noted that he's happily moved into his new facility out there. Okay. Next up is approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Expo Idaho with some commercial exhibitor agreements for the Western Idaho Fair. Is there any question or discussion on any of these, any of these commercial exhibits? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the fourteen commercial exhibitor agreements for the two thousand twenty-four Western Idaho Fair as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Parks and Waterways. We have two events at the Barber Park Education and Events Center. Are there any questions or discussions about those two events? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Events Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have some operations chains orders. First one is RFP Ada County Juvenile Services Water Service Replacement. It's got a decrease of twelve thousand dollars. Is there any questions or issues about that change order? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
To put all of them together?
You can do that if you want.
I move to approve the three change orders as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Motion carries.
I was just going to say that it's to be noted that some of those are decreases, that our staff has done their due diligence in monitoring those and we give money back.
Yeah, they're all decreases. Well, good enough. That's good. Yeah. Okay, now we have agreements to ratify, and one's ratification. Agreed by Commissioner Daley and Davidson on seven eighteen.
That should be seven nineteen, I apologize.
Should be what?
Seven nineteen, it was Friday, I apologize.
Seven nineteen. Okay. And we have ten new agreements. Is there any question or discussion on any of the agreements?
We have a lot of agreements related to elevators, I see.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, the T K Elevator contract negotiations went on for quite a while. The legal staff advised us, instead of modifying our existing contract, that we would do an amendment in conjunction with their prime contract at one time. So, you'll see for both of those projects, the prime contract, which is the county contract, and an amendment based on the comments received from T K Elevator and an agreement that we came to with their organization. But once again, it's two contracts, four different contracts to represent those two projects. A little complicated, but legal, navigated through it, and they felt that was the best way to execute that agreement.
And it must be, it might be noted that this was in our last, this is this year, but it.
That's correct.
Yeah. And having been locked in an elevator, I think it's.
That's my time to give this. Order Solutions. So, I don't know if you want to say, make any additional comments, but.
That's just our GPS tracking for the cages, so we'll know where those cages are at at all times. So, Jacob was actually involved with that negotiation, so.
We want to know where the cages go.
We're looking forward to getting that in place.
All right, any other questions or discussion on these agreements? I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion regarding the ratification that we previously voted on. So, I'll move to approve and ratify agreement number three zero one two zero, signed by Commissioners Davidson and Daley on. Okay. I'll move to approve and ratify agreement number one, three zero one two one, signed by Commissioner Davidson and Daley on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And then, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining ten agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any further discussion on any of the contracts? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any further business that needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none will be adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Board of Commissioners is in session, standing as the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District Board for its open week business, open business meeting. Today is the twenty third day of July. The time is nine twenty seven. The. All three Commissioners are present. We also have with us.
John Blake.
John Blake.
Elizabeth Duncan.
And our normal IT guy. Okay. All right, my clerk, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Okay, we have a first, a resolution. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine nine five, adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Emergency Emergency Medical Services District budget. Any issues or discussion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two nine nine five as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine nine five and accept a motion. Do it again.
Okay, I move to approve the resolution two nine nine five as listed on the agenda.
Second. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, now we have the claims journal. Paying the bills for the EMS for the week. Any discussion on anything on the claims? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty four regarding EMS expenditures.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have personnel actions. Any discussion or issues on personnel actions? If none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' office.
Second. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, I have the approval of minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have now an agreement. It's actually, it's a memorandum of understanding between Ada County, Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and the Women's and Children's Alliance for Transport of Victims to the Ada County Victim Services Center. Okay, any questions or discussion? I've read through it. Looks good to me. Any?
Just a note that that's one of the new participants at the Ada County Victim Center.
Yep, Wyndham and Children's Alliance has moved into the Ada County Victim Services Center.
Right. And doing a great.
Doing a great job.
Contributor part of that organization.
Doing a great job.
So this contract is for transporting them from the center to the hospital or vice versa?
From scenes from where they are when we find them to the facility.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve agreement number three zero one three nine as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have our EMS update.
Good morning. I only have a couple of things for you. One is that we're in the middle of a hiring that I always find to be, we we're on our second one now, where we are not necessarily going to fill vacancies right away. We are hiring for a list, which is fantastic. It also is, it it speaks to me, the idea that a number of people want to work for Ada County paramedics. And so we have a robust list of paramedics that applied and have been accepted for in-person testing and interviews in early August.
Great.
I think you all know of our recent dispatch outage.
Yep.
Dispatch software went down weekend before last and was down for a week. We are now back up and running. It was it was an interesting and unprecedented time where we went from high technology, really functional, down to paper and pencils and and candlelight. That's largely what it felt like. And then you have to remember, well, that's how we started. That's how I started twenty five years ago. I'm like, okay, not so bad. It turns out Dispatch did a really fantastic job of of troubleshooting this thing and getting it back up and running. And we're happy to go back to a higher technology part of the world and a higher technology function for being dispatched.
Yes.
That's great.
And you did a very good job. It was unplanned and unscheduled, but it was a good exercise in how to.
Let's not do it again real soon. I I think I too, this this really was, a lot of people had originally thought this was some hacker that had shut us down as opposed to, oh, a bad actor, and we're going to shut down and button up and wall off from you before something happens, which is fantastic. Sense of threat and actually do something. You know, I can imagine in those moments while you're thinking about, wow, this is a really big deal, what's the best thing to do? It still takes some guts to do that, to to take that action. I'm glad they did.
Thank you for all your good work, because most people don't even realize that happened, and that's the way we want it.
Yeah, exactly. That's right.
It probably cut the response time down a little bit, didn't it?
You might think that it it would have, but as they as they transitioned from technology to not technology, there were some, there were some bumps there, that's for sure, and some of that was. Well, the short story was, everybody still got to the emergencies that they were called to.
And that's good.
Yep.
That's good. And thank you for your your your. Amen, your hard work in getting it.
You bet.
Making it smooth, because that was an unexpected event, and we had, we fortunately had had well planned.
Yep. Dispatch really knocked it out of the park.